Okay.
Good evening, everyone. It's a little bit of an earlier meeting than we're used to. I hereby open the work session of the Planning Commission, acting in its role as the Committee for Citizen Involvement. Could we have a roll call, please?
Chair McGinley.
Present.
Commissioner Landon, out. Commissioner Coibula.
Here.
Commissioner Gill.
Here.
Commissioner Bergen.
Here.
Commissioner Salazar.
Present.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brenda.
Welcome.
As we begin our meeting tonight, I would like to ask members of the audience who are joining us by phone or online, to please keep yourselves on mute during this portion of the meeting. This meeting is a work session where the public may attend, but not provide testimony. Later during the regular session, there will be time for public comments to the Planning Commission. And now I'll start us off with our work session item, Develop and Code Update Project with Mark Rust. And before we, before we begin, let's go through the potential conflicts of interest. So I'm Sophie McGinley. I do not own property at all, so I do not have any potential conflicts of interest. I'll go over to Commissioner Coibula.
Yeah, I'm a property owner in Springfield, so I have a potential conflict of interest.
Thank you. Commissioner Bergen.
Property owner in Springfield and a realtor practicing primarily residential in Springfield as well, so potential conflict of interest.
Thank you. Commissioner Salazar.
I am a real property owner in Springfield and also work for a organization that develops housing in Eugene and Springfield, so both potential conflicts of interest.
Thank you. Commissioner Gill.
I am also a property owner in Springfield, so have a potential conflict of interest.
Thank you, everyone. And now over to Mark.
Thank you, Chair McGinley and Commissioners. And for the record, I'm Mark Rust, Senior Planner with City of Springfield. I've been the Project Manager on the Development Code Update. And tonight I'm bringing your work session to give you an update on where we're at with code project, but even more specifically asking for your input and feedback on launching into the community engagement steps for Phase One and Phase Two of the Code Update Project. I do want to kind of take a quick step back and reflect for just a minute on where we started with this project and it's been, I know the city council first started talking about this project back in 2017. I became the Project Manager in about mid 2018, so I've been working on this for going on three years. And originally, the project was envisioned by the council to be a three-year project, to complete all of it. It was originally a phased project. And as most of you know, having been on the Planning Commission for a while, we have brought to you some amendments to the project's schedule over the years. More significantly recently, in response to the COVID pandemic. And then prior to that, also in response to new legislation that was passed by the state to, for middle housing. And so at council's direction to fully implement the new middle housing legislation into the code update, we adjusted the schedule for that as well. I'm going to just share the the original purpose statement that was adopted as part of the Community Engagement Plan that this body approved at the beginning of the project. I'm not going to read it, but you can see it on the screen there. And then also built off of this purpose statement, the objectives of the project overall. Basically, looking for ways to make the code easier to use, understand, be more predictable and reasonable. The, there's in addition to the new middle housing legislation, there's, there was pre-existing state legislation that requires the city to have clear and objective standards for approving all housing, essentially. And so creating a code that also meets that state mandate to have clear and objective standards. That's been a big part of it. Part of the motto I thought of at the beginning of this project was figuring out how to do this project differently. And at the time, was mostly thinking about how to meet the, what I saw at the time as, as an aggressive timeline. During the complete code update in three years was optimistic, in my professional opinion at the time. Obviously, we have had to extend the timeline due to some extenuating circumstances. But the doing it differently also became very applicable in that in the age of COVID now that we're all living with, figuring out how to now move into the community engagement portion of these phases in a way that is not typical, doing more virtual outreach. So with that, in tonight's packet, I'm going to just touch on a couple of things that are in the memo. But also the attachments include the communication memo. Attachment two, that I'll, I'll speak to later in tonight's presentation is a list of significant code changes. And then Attachment Three is the, an updated version of the project's schedule. As part of the communication memo, I included links in that memo. One of the links was to what I'm going to go walk through tonight. And that is the story map, or I'm referring it also to as the virtual open house. This is a draft of the virtual open house. I shared this virtual open house with the city council last Monday and asked direction from city council last Monday to proceed with the community engagement. They agreed to and thought it was appropriate for staff to go ahead and move forward with the community engagement steps. Understanding that I was bringing this to the Planning Commission as, acting as the CCI, the Committee for Citizen Involvement tonight, to get your feedback prior to doing that. We intend to do the formal launch of all the community engagement at the end of this month, or maybe the very beginning of July, so in just a couple of weeks. And so we'll be polishing up both the this virtual open house and the other materials that you'll be, have either seen or will be seeing tonight for that outreach and community engagement. I'm going to share my screen again. That includes the virtual open house. I am happy to entertain questions as we go through tonight's presentation if they come up. So feel free to chime in with questions as we go. We do have 90 minutes. It's a little longer than usual. And I'm just clicking on some screens here, so give me just a second. Sorry about that. All right, I think I'll go with this. Hopefully you're still seeing the I'm not sure what you're saying. Hang on, I'm going to try this one more time. Give me, this delay here, just a second. Technology was, we're all learning to be better at. Okay, maybe somebody could come up with their video and give me a thumbs up, making sure we're seeing the Springfield Development Code Update Project. Looks like yes, great. Thank you, Chair McGinley and Commissioner Bergen. So I'm going to, hopefully, most of you, if not all of you, have had a chance to preview this story map. Again, it is a draft. There's some polishing to it that needs to be done. I've actually, we've been actively making changes to it this last week since the city council weighed in. They had some suggestions. I would say, in summary, primarily their work suggestions were to make it read a little bit easier and not so technical. This information is pretty technical and in some cases legalistic. There can, there's a lot of language or a lot of information. It's a large project. So trying to convey the information in a way for the public to grasp it and understand it so they can provide valuable input is our key. I've been working with our community relations staff to help with that language editing and things. So the format of this is to scroll through this. It's almost like a slideshow, but you just continually scroll down and it kind of goes through different sections. It starts with this welcome section. You can also click across the top here, these links that will jump you to different sections or jump back if you're only interested in a certain part. The, there's some interactive nature to this, and I'll get into that in a little bit. But, so we start with kind of just a brief welcome or introduction to the project. We're providing links to other community engagement materials. Some of these aren't quite live yet, but we hope to, well, we're not hope to. We will have these links all live by the time we release this, linking to fact sheets and FAQs, the project schedule and different things. We see this also probably as being built upon, potentially one of the recommendations from city council last Monday was potentially including short video clips explaining different sections. So I think there's an opportunity to, as kind of a virtual FAQ or question and answer, is if we're getting a common theme around certain questions or people wanting more information about certain topics is recording just a short video clip that we could link to from here to provide people additional information, explain certain thing. Commissioner Bergen, I see you pop up. I don't want to take the chair's role. Chair McGinley wants to call on Commissioner.
Go ahead, Commissioner Bergen.
Thank you. Just a quick question on this slide here. On the left, we are seeing here links to project documents. And some of them are underlined in green. Are those ones more important? Is there a reason that those are underlined and others are not?
Yeah, and the difference there right now is that those are the ones that are actually live that have links. All of them will be underlined green eventually. These ones without the green don't have a live link to them yet.
Okay.
But that's the current difference. Eventually, they'll all be the same.
Okay, just for a little bit of background of why I was wondering is, I didn't, wasn't sure if we were steering people to, if those ones are more important. So thank you for answering that for me.
Yeah, we're not trying to prioritize or highlight any of them differently.
Commissioner Salazar.
Hi, thanks, Mark. I just had a question about the frequently asked questions, knowing that we're just beginning the public outreach phase now. Where are those questions are coming from? If they, if we haven't had opportunities to gather feedback yet.
Yeah, great, Commissioner, great question, Commissioner. Thank you. And and I can act, let's see if I can actually just click on it. Oh, that's one that's not live. So we actually, I think that's the one, well, no, there is just one frequently asked question. And it's linked from our current project webpage. And what that contains currently is related primarily to middle housing and House Bill 2001. And so trying to, because that's all new to pretty much everybody in the state, because it's new legislation, the frequently asked questions have to do with what is middle housing? You know, what's the city required to do? Those types of, really, I honestly stole a lot of those FAQs from the state, the state themselves. Has an FAQ that I put into more of a Springfield format and provided that information there. So that's basically the focus of it now.
Great. I think there's nothing wrong with that. And yeah, certainly, I'm sure we'll get, as, as we continue the public outreach, we'll get a lot more questions and we can fill that in as we go. Thanks.
Thank you.
Commissioner Gill. It looks like you're muted, Commissioner Gill.
Thank you. It's all busy trying to take my hand down. Um, I super agree with the video idea. I think that that went over really well with the with the urban growth boundary stuff that came out. And I know a lot of the audiences in Springfield that we work with appreciate having words to, like spoken word to explain things. Even one of the more general sections might be nice to have in Spanish because we have a lot of business people and property owners of all kinds that are primary Spanish speakers, and this is pretty complex. The other thing I thought might be really helpful, and this has been coming up in conversations I've had with people, and it's something I also have to remind myself of, is maybe a little section that talks about what this isn't about, that it isn't about zoning. Because I think a lot of people are going to want to take action around that and and yeah, there's a lot of words. Oh, there we go. Okay, cool. Thank you. I'm sorry I missed that down the line.
But I, and, and it's, they're great comments, Commissioner Gill. I appreciate it. And so, but, and I want to make sure I'm understanding your comment about what it isn't. And so it's not necessarily about zoning. I mean, I have a list here of things we're not doing as part of this project. One of the pieces of feedback I received from the council was highlighting that some of these things on this list of 12 things here are actually being worked on currently under other projects. So making that, people aware of that, even providing links maybe, or, you know, dates or project information about some of these things. I'll mention like number four, we're current, our city engineer is currently working on revisions to some of the EDS PM standards that he recently took those to city council for revisions. So some of these things are being worked on. It's just that they're not necessarily being worked on as part of this project. But when your comment just a minute ago was, it's not necessarily about zoning, is that more related to the middle housing stuff than we're looking at?
I think it's just in general. I think when people think about what, what city code, hmm, what the implications of what a city code is, is for the general public. I think zoning actually is what comes to mind first for a lot of people, like the ramifications of where they are and what they can build there. And, and we're not changing those zoning areas with this. We are changing some of how you can behave within those, but somehow clarifying like you, where any comments you provide or input you provide isn't going to influence that. So thinking about sort of, if I'm a regular person off the street, not a developer who lives with us all the time, or a planner who lives with us all the time, what are the things that I'm guessing, right, are going to be part of a city code, development code? And let them know that that's not what this is. And I think you say what it is, but I think it's going to help people to also know what it's not.
Yeah.
And I don't know the exact words for that. I feel like you all can work it out, but I think that that might be valuable at the beginning. So when they are digging through all of this, they sort of have their expectations managed upfront.
Yeah, it's a great point. And it, it's a real balancing act for me and us, the project team, to figure out what is going to convey all the messages best. I mean, some people are more visual type people learners or versus reading stuff. I had shared with the Planning Commission last meeting, I think, the, the survey questions that we've built to kind of get the input on. And usually using visuals as part of that survey question to show them what lock coverage is or setbacks and height and the potential kind of general ramifications of that. So through the survey questions and seeking the feedback on some of those things and showing them hopefully what that means will help convey some of that message too. But I think your, your points were taken in that managing expectations will be important. I, I I don't think I mentioned to this group, I may have, but I'll repeat it just in case. But, so we also, what we're waiting on to build into this as well is we had gotten a grant from the AARP, who partners with Smart Growth America. And so AARP pays for the Smart Growth America as a consultant for the city. And we, they are developing some messaging concepts for us to build into this. And we've conducted the meetings and brainstorming sessions with them and waiting for their report back to us to help kind of convey the message. It's almost the, the marketing side of it, that, you know, me as kind of a technical planner type isn't as good at that telling the story or the conveying the message part. So once we get that report back from AARP or from Smart Growth America through that grant, we'll build that, those messaging components into this as well to hopefully better help with kind of those expectation ideas, if that makes sense.
Commissioner Gill, would you like to respond to that first?
It, it wasn't a response to it. It was another thing that came up because of it. So I don't know if you want to go before.
Go ahead.
Okay, so in, in addition to that, when you're talking about the messaging and the way different people respond to things, Oregon Health Authority and the Lane County Health Authority have really done some good work recently, making changes to how they message to different cultural perspectives. And it was effective, like they have some really good before and after. And I know that the Lane Health Authority folks have been willing to talk about. And I know it's not, I know it's health, it's a different thing, but, but they're really helpful in talking about some of the bigger themes that they addressed in, in thinking about different cultural language to use, not, not like English versus Mandarin, but English versus, like, someone like me versus someone who grew up in the South versus someone who moved here from Taiwan. We all have different cultural approaches and things that we care about for different ways, in different ways, for different reasons. And they have been helpful with other organizations, sort of sharing the perspective they've gained there. So if you're looking for some of that, that might be a good resource.
Yeah, that's great. I hadn't heard of that, so I appreciate the input on it. The one thing I meant to mention too, you mentioned a little bit, a minute ago or so about translation. We are looking to work with downtown languages here in Springfield to translate a lot of these materials into Spanish. We haven't worked out the details yet around translating this virtual open house into Spanish, but the FAQs for sure, and the fact sheet and those types of materials. And then what we also plan to do then is host kind of focus group meetings with downtown languages as a facilitator to facilitate, basically, whether it's going to be in person or virtual or a hybrid focus group meeting for this kind of Spanish-speaking community with them providing the, again, the translation services with us, you know, providing information. Those will be happening over the summer as part of the community engagement as well. But I like your idea about, even beyond just the, the language differences, the cultural sensitivity around it too. It's good feedback.
Great, thanks.
Commissioner Salazar, I'm going to put myself in the queue and then I'll have you after me, if that's all right. First of all, I think that it's great that we continue to use a technical tool, you know, combined with the narrative storytelling that comes from staff. I think it worked out really great with the UGB expansion wetland inventory, and it's a natural fit here and just was used well. So kudos to the GIS staff. Um, I have, I did a few things. The first thing I did was look at this on my phone, because a lot of people use their smartphones to, to do surveys and it looked good on the phone, so that's a good thing. Then I checked the reading level on readable.com and it's a little bit like 10.1, you know, on a scale. A little bit above a 10th grade reading level, which is right about where you want to be. So another kudos to staff for writing in plain language. There, there are two things that I would like to suggest to adjust or hear more about the commission about. The first is you have to scroll quite a ways, especially on your phone, to get to the button to take the survey. And there are some people that will be like, this is long, I don't care, you know, goodbye. So perhaps putting a link at the front and suggesting people read or putting, I haven't seen the survey yet, but putting the link to the story map at the beginning of the survey to try to get them to do the story map before the survey. But if we're just promoting the, the survey through the story map, there are some people that just won't make it to the end because it's chock full of information. And that information is awesome and exciting. It's a lot. My second thing is in the welcome section, it says, what, what did I highlight? You can help us make sure that the proposed code is easy to understand, more streamlined and supports development. And all of those things are true. And I don't want the language to minimize how big this update is. There are quite a few things that are changing, that are pretty ambitious and bold. So I don't, I don't know if, I'm just externally processing here. I'm sorry. I didn't prepare something. But, you know, help weigh in on big changes coming to development code. We want to hear from you, like really making that ask that like, this is important, it's big, and we want your opinion. Because I don't know, from reading that initial welcome section, that, you know, the ordinary person who's not super familiar with land use would know how big of a task this is and how many things could be changing. And that's it for me, but great job and I'm excited for this to launch. And I'll go over to Commissioner Salazar.
I could just take a second. I appreciate the feedback and input. And I think you're right. I mean, not minimizing that and mentioning that is a great idea. It may have been one of the things we cut out to kind of streamline the language. So, but adding something back in there makes sense to me. So thank you.
All right, and I'll just jump right in. And yeah, echo two of Chair McGinley's points that, yeah, I also went through the, the story map in, on a mobile setting and it worked great. The functionality was great for mobile. And, but also, yeah, it is, it is pretty long, especially if we're trying to get people to, to read the survey. I think of yeah, folk, folks like me and the members of this commission who are really excited about this stuff. But then I think about my partner, who, my spouse, who's not as excited about this stuff. And thinking of my neighbor who has two kids, is single dad, and does he have time to, to go through this? So how do we make this? Yeah, seem manageable to, to participate in this for folks who might not be as excited about this. I think also along those lines, I, I would argue that a 10th grade reading level is still a bit too high. I know you got, it sounds like you got that feedback from the city council. But yeah, continue to, it sounds like you're working on, on making that a little more accessible with the language. But yeah, I think for a lot of, of public agencies, the goal is like fourth to seventh grade reading level, which is really tough when we're talking about these technical issues and using words like tax law. But I think as much as we can simplify that for, for readers, the more we can engage folks and make it translatable. My final point is that getting back to this, I think the, the portions that you talked about, what this section of the development code update is and is not, I love that section. And, but I think because it's focused so much on the scope of what this is, I think there could even be a section talking about the impacts of what this is and is not. I'm just thinking about critiques that I've heard of the, of Senate Bill 2001 in the community, in the media, and the way that this is oversimplified a lot and oversimplified to the point of, of saying, oh, this is making single-family home, single-family home development illegal, which this is not. So talking about how it is not, this is not making single-family home development illegal. So I think talking not just about what it is not in terms So I think talking not just about what it is not in terms of scope, but also what it is not in terms of impact, if that makes sense.
It does, yeah, great feedback. And if I could just chime in for a second, um, just to mention, we are cross-marketing both this virtual open house and the survey separately. Um, I think it's an easy fix to add kind of the survey link to the top of this page so people can get there very easily at the beginning. Uh, but also we will be, um, using the QR code that I shared with the, I think I shared with this group, maybe it was just the, um, I can't remember now, too many groups, but anyway, we created a QR code that hopefully will also be scannable, that will be getting out there as part of the community engagement, that will take people to the project webpage. That then on the top of the project webpage will be directly the link to the survey. And the survey will inform them about the, um, virtual open house so they can get informed before they do the survey if they choose to. Um, and then the last thing I'll mention quickly, I know Commissioner Quagila, as a kind of a teaser for you in a little bit here, as part of this work session, I plan to share with you, um, you will be the first ones to see these visuals that we had developed. Commissioner Quagila asked for some images to demonstrate kind of the, the impacts from the proposed changes. And we were, I worked pretty diligently to try and find somebody to help us create these images and was lucky enough to find a local architect, Dylan Lamar, who is working, has an intern that was gracious enough to provide pro bono, um, development of some images that I think, I'm hoping you'll be excited about. That I'll share here in just a little bit in response to Commissioner Quagila's request for these images to show kind of massing differences. Um, anyway, they're, they're fairly simplistic images, you'll see them in a little bit, but anyway, that, that's coming. And we intend to try and integrate that in some manner into this as well, so we're looking for your feedback on that.
Thanks, Mark. Commissioner Quagila.
I guess, uh, thank you, Mark. Um, first of all, I'd like to say that, um, I do support that, um, uh, information about what the, uh, information sheet about what the program is not. And, um, keeping with what Commissioner Gill and Commissioner, um, McKinley have said, I would like to go ahead and say that it would be important to have those links where there are actually changes, uh, proposed by other parts of the city, that that is represented so that people, if they saw something that say, for instance, there's no changes to the, he, to the engineering standards manual, that later if they found that that was true, they could say, they wouldn't be surprised by it. So, um, just to have, uh, basically the, we used to call it a one, uh, information city, so that it's a broad, you represent just not your narrow component of what you're working on, but the broad impacts of what the city is working on. I know it's, uh, it, it's very difficult to cover everything, but in instances like that, it would be really good to have that. Um, uh, also, um, wanted to go ahead and say that I read about, uh, um, Smart Growth Grant and I think that's really great. My question regarding that is, um, will they be directing some of the outreach with this grant? Or with the city, are they just basically providing funds and resources for the city to direct, uh, um, the outreach?
So, the short answer is no, they will not be directing any of the outreach. It's a very, very limited, um, opportunity of engagement with Smart Growth. And all they're going to be doing is basically providing us three, what they see as the three most important talking points. So how we convey those three important talking points in our messaging is, and then their involvement is done. They're going to provide us a memo and then there's no further planned engagement with them beyond that.
Great. And then the last thing is those graphic examples, I'm very excited to see those. Uh, express my thanks to Dylan. Is he, uh, the architect for the C Street, uh, project as, as I recall, right?
That's correct.
Okay, great. Yeah, that's a real nice project too. So kudos, kudos to him on that as well. But, uh, that's wonderful to have those done. I'm looking forward to seeing those. Thank you.
Yeah. So I don't see any other hands, so if it's alright, Chair and Commissioners, I'll continue to scroll through this. It sounds like most of you have viewed this, so I don't want to belabor the points. But I do want to make sure we cover everything if there's questions, so, um, I won't, I'm not going to read this or touch on everything, but just to kind of cover everything, we do go, you know, here is an example of, we don't have a picture here. I do intend to insert a picture on this page, um, an additional photograph of something, we're not quite sure yet. These different sections talk about different points, um, you know, talking about the mandate by state law for middle housing. I think, you know, because the original idea of the code of the project as a whole was to have staggered phases, phase one followed by phase two, and then ultimately phase three. Due to some of the setbacks and pro- project timeline adjustments, we're running phase one and phase two concurrently now. The original intent of the code project prior to the middle housing legislation was to basically remain um, comprehensive plan, policy neutral. So our comprehensive plan, as most of you know, you know, sets kind of the policy framework for the city in planning and how our zoning and development happens. So we weren't contemplating going outside of that existing policy framework. It was more an exercise of the code update, just updating, modernize our code, reformat it, have it be easier to use. Because of the mandates by state law, it is requiring us to be outside of our existing policy framework. And so it's, you know, density is, um, the good, uh, uh, easy example. Because of middle housing, basically our density standards don't work anymore. So we're really going to be regulating more based on housing type rather than density. And so the main focus of this, both this, um, virtual open house and just the community engagement in general, is pretty heavy on the housing part, but we also don't want to get lost, um, have the phase two work get lost in the bigger discussion. Although the phase two work is on the employment land part of the code, but it's also a lot of the development standards. And again, the development standards necessitates, um, having to create a lot of the development standards to be clear and objective to meet state law as well. The, um, we do talk about what the clear and objective standards means from state law. But I guess my point is with the employment lands phase, we are staying policy neutral. And, um, so it's, there's not as, there's not the drastic change or difference outside of, um, the existing policy framework for employment lands like there is going to be for housing. So we're anticipating more interest and discussion around the housing portions, but also wanting to highlight the changes in, with the employment land stage of the project too. And I think the attachment to in your packet tonight, that is kind of the list of significant changes. It's a table format, that's in different sections. And there's a section on the residential changes as well as the employment land changes and development standard changes. We, I see that document as a living document and we'll also be building on that list of significant changes as things are identified or as people have questions. And we recognize, yeah, you know, a lot of people have concerns about some topic that we should add to that table that is a significant change. So I do want to highlight this map, so this map still needs a little work and we're still trying to figure out the best way to represent the, um, kind of the, the, uh, the table of contents part of this map. But this is an interactive map and y- you can zoom in on it. You could zoom in pretty tight on even the level, um, you know, a lot level. But what the coloring, and, and you've seen a very similar map to this before, but you know, we need to define what these different colors mean in the legend. But just for discussion purposes for tonight, wh- what the green means is represents all the green lots. Well, first, let, let me back up. All the, uh, this light shaded kind of yellow area represents all the low, what's existing low density residential zoning in the city. So everything that's grayed out is some other zoning, other than the low density residential. But then within the low density residential, what the green lots represent are lots that are over 5,000 square feet. So those lots would be eligible for a triplex under the middle housing regulations. And then the lots that are highlighted in the darker orange color are over 7,000 square feet and represent lots that would allow a fourplex. So we're trying, and again, that will be better displayed and explained here. Um, we're still fine tuning that, but so people can kind of zoom into their neighborhood and kind of trying to assess a little bit of what the, I guess maybe worst case or best case ramifications might be. If, you know, you live right here, you might understand that, well, I might have triplexes, but, um, not a lot of fourplexes or, I might have fourplexes or, there's definitely going to be areas where, um, maybe only the lots aren't large enough to allow the triplexes, so only duplexes may be allowed. Anyway, it's, it's a way to hopefully convey some information for folks to get a better idea how it may impact them directly on where they live. I don't know if Commissioner Quagila's hand's still up from previously or if that's a new hand, but.
New hand.
Go ahead, Commissioner Quagila.
Thank you. Uh, that map is just great, um, uh, really, really informative. It's another part of, um, what I was really hoping to see and I, I really think that that's great to get this. Um, there will have to be some pretty serious caveats on that based on the fact that there could be easements across some of these lots that would preclude, um, uh, you know, so you, you just want to make sure that people know that this is general information and it's not really to be looked on as being specific to your particular lot. I'm sure you have that, you have that in mind.
Yeah, it's a great point. One thing I'll just mention is specifically is, as we've discussed previously is properties with CCNRs that may be in a subdivision with CCNRs that preclude maybe more than one dwelling on a lot. Um, the middle housing legislation doesn't really address pre-existing CCNRs and we don't have the ability to kind of override or even enforce CCNRs. So that's a great example of an area where we may show on this map that, say, triflexes could be allowed, but because of CCNRs, they wouldn't be allowed. So you're right, a disclaimer will be added to facilitate some of that understanding. Um, so then we looked at the employment lands piece a little bit, the, um, and then this is basically the end, this is the link to the comp, the survey. And we, you have, you saw in a previous work session, the survey questions, you didn't see it necessarily the survey format. That's still being finalized, but all the questions and the images associated with the survey questions were shared with you previously. So with that, um, unless there's any other questions about this, uh, story map, I can jump to the, uh, images if you'd like, or I'm happy to answer any questions quick before we do that. The one thing I didn't really mention is, as part of, I think the sec- maybe I did mention it, but the second link in the packet, in the, excuse me, the communication memo as part of the packet is to the city council packet from last week. As part of that packet is, uh, as attachments are all the draft code sections. And the, there's, I think, a total of 12 different code sections, um, comprised of hundreds of pages. And that's, you know, three years worth of work and those hundreds of pages are revised, or not even revised, but new code sections. Um, I call them kind of a, an 85, maybe a 90% draft. They definitely still do need some work. They're not 100% yet, they're not, don't have the final polishing on them yet. We're hoping to release those in the draft form intentionally to then get the feedback from the public so we can, you know, together with working with the planning commission over the summer and ultimately into the public hearings process, that, um, we'll be able to finalize those and, um, release the public hearing drafts that will be, have the final polish done to them. So I'm just making, doing some clicking here to try and share my screen again. And what I'm going to share are the images I referred to, hopefully, let's see. And we're back here to these intro slides. So here are the images that were prepared, like I mentioned, by Dylan Lamar. There's a series of, I think, 14 of them and I don't have to go through them all in detail. Um, I think I, what I will do is maybe jump to one of the end ones to give you kind of a bigger picture and then we can go through some of the details. But this first one at least, this represents the existing code. Um, it's labeled here, existing code, and hopefully you're seeing this right diagram and you can see my cursor hopefully. But, um, so this represents our existing height limit as well as our existing setbacks and then the lot coverage. So those are kind of the variables we're looking at, is setbacks, height, lot coverage, for the most part. But we're also talking about a variety of different and new housing types. So with this representing what's allowed under the existing code, um, and we're proposing changes within the draft code, the changes primarily are we're proposing to increase the height, decrease the rear setback at least, and then increase the lot coverage. And then obviously for middle housing, we're proposing different housing types. Um, I'm going to just jump, see, I'll just make you all dizzy here for a second, give you a quick preview. Whoops, now I went too far. This, I think, is a nice slide that represents a side by side comparison of kind of the ultimate difference in massing. What I do want to say is we kept these very simplistic on purpose. We didn't try to incorporate garages, for instance. Um, these, I'm trying to represent as kind of the maximum extent of the building envelope that could be built on. And I'll go through the individual ones in a second. But the, and the detailed ones will show more specifically that these are increased heights and increased, these kind of show the increased lot coverage based on lot size here, some different lot sizes with the increased lot coverage. The other thing I want to say, and, um, it's kind of a wild card variable, and that is how to deal with stormwater. So the city, I've mentioned this before, but the city is, um, now under a new stormwater permit, that it's a federal permit that comes through the state DEQ. It's called, we call it the MS4 permit, municipal separate stormwater. Um, I think there's a fourth F and I can't remember, but it's our stormwater permit that will, over the next year or two or three, will, will be moving towards new stormwater standards that will require, in my, um, simple understanding of it, is basically even for single family homes and all these middle housing types, will basically be requiring these, um, structures to be containing their stormwater. And that's mainly the roof runoff on site. So instead of what we typically see now is the, the roof drains, like running either just onto the ground and surface draining or, um, infiltrating, or in a lot of neighborhoods, they get piped to a, out to the curb and gutter and then run down the street somewhere. All that stormwater will in the future have to be contained and retained on that property and dig a swale or a rain garden or some approved stormwater feature that will allow the water to infiltrate into the ground, um, be vegetated so that the vegetation is. Um, be vegetated so that the vegetation is treating the stormwater. So those types of things. So. The parking and the stormwater are kind of the variables that we didn't try to really represent or address with this. Um, and just so we understand this is kind of the maximum building envelopes, but I see Commissioner Bergen's hand up.
Chair Bergen.
Thank you. I absolutely love this graphic. Um, and I don't know if it's too in the weeds, but I'm curious what your thoughts are on just slight color variation. To where it's obvious which one's the existing. And then we can see the difference and and not just for us, but for the community members. So they can just glance at it and see instead of having to look. And find where the the arrows line or the lines line up. So if the existing was one color. And then a proposed code of the three thousand square foot was one color. And even the units, the ones that we have, the stacked units and then the side by side units, if those were even just a variation. A different color so that it's easier to understand. Um, and I think someone had mentioned earlier, those that. Um, live with us that have, you know, in the the planners and the developers, they're they'll look at this and understand it. Quite quickly, but those that have never looked at anything like this, I wonder if there's a way just by color coordination. If we can make it look a little bit easier to read and understand.
Yeah, that's great feedback, Commissioner. Um. I think I'll just mention again, these were done pro bono for us by an intern through Dylan Lamar's architecture firm and. I could read, he he offered some minor treats, the availability of his intern. Um, to do maybe some minor treats. I could reach back out to them and ask about that. I don't know to the ease of of making those changes, but I'm happy to at least ask. Um. Anyway, I'll I'll see what their response is, so.
Thanks. And I I don't know that it's um. You know, do or die, and I appreciate the pro bono work. They've done a great job. It really helps illustrate. Um, so thank you for that.
I I see Chairman Kimery's hand up. The one thing I'll just wanted to add that. There's kind of, and I'll point to this number five example with this dash line down the middle. And these dash lines are kind of just to represent numbers of units. Um, you know, so this would be a stacked duplex where this would be like a side by side duplex. The um versus a triplex, this is kind of representing a a stacked triplex. When it wouldn't necessarily be one floor would be each unit. I'm not even sure you can fit three full stories in. This is representing a thirty-five foot high height limit, but. What I want to just mention briefly is in addition to. The new middle housing legislation, there was even more recent legislation just passed within the last month under the current legislative session. It's Senate Bill four fifty-eight, and I refer to it kind of as the expedited middle housing land division bill. Um, so in a situation where somebody might build a side by side duplex. This new legislation will now also allow. A person to divide this duplex if they meet building code and some other like utility standards and things. To create this into two separate legal lots so they could sell each side separately. Um, so even though we may be proposing to lower the minimum lot size down to three thousand, this new legislation will. Require us to allow. Somebody to divide this effectively creating fifteen hundred square foot lots with one unit on each side. So just that's part of this new. Evolving equation of middle housing and new legislation we're responding to. So that could be part of the conversation, so.
Thank you, Mark. Um, I agree with Commissioner Bergen. This graphic is so helpful. Um, because. You know, you just wouldn't know that uh, you know, the housing types are different than each other because they generally have a similar building envelope. Um, for whenever we do release this diagram, um, I liked that the past diagram um. Had a caption that said it was the maximum uh building envelope. And I am assuming that that's also what this diagram is, and um if so. I would prefer that it be labeled that way because there could be a fourplex. It's my, oh, perfect. Um, thank you, Mark.
I'm going backwards now, but yeah, we can look at some of these in detail now.
Great. And then I have two more things um for, thank you for giving us the heads up about the stormwater. Um. Something that's helpful is that um our neighbor to the west um has already had to comply with that and. Uh, there's a form online called the SIM form. I think it stands for. Simplified Approach for Stormwater Management. If you just Google like Eugene Sim Farm. Can see it and it'll kind of show what any property owner would have to look at um. When accommodating stormwater. And so from the land use side, you know, they put in these these numbers, you know, amount of impervious surface and some other stuff. And then they have to see how much room they have to allocate on their lot. So for anybody that. Um, just wants to see how it's already in action, that was really helpful for me and. Um, I was able to sort of understand it out of school and it was helpful. Um, the last thing I'll say is. Um, at first Senate Bill four fifty-eight uh freaked me out. It got me really excited, but freaked me out for how does it fit into the land use code? And so um fortunately, I found an example in Seattle. Um, they call it unit lot subdivisions and. Um, it was really helpful for me to see that really, once a lot is developed. As a fourplex lot, as a triplex lot, it's always that lot. It always has to meet those standards. You don't get a new single family lot when you divide. Um, so I'm happy to follow up and share that code language. Um, really like all that changes is that somebody can own the land under them, so under their house. So. Um, they, Seattle's done that. They also allow detached plexes, um like our code recommendations currently propose. Um, and I actually have a friend that lives in a detached fourplex that's on its own lot in Seattle, so that's kind of fun, but. Um, I went through and looked at their uh land use applications for that property because that's what I do and um. Super helpful to see that really there weren't, you know, there was no circumstance where it would go like out of control and suddenly, you know, there'd be. Tiny ADUs on and new definitions and all of this. It's just in order to comply, I'm hoping that. Really, the the most work we can do is write good parent lot standards and. We won't really see any effect from four fifty-eight other than ownership, which is awesome. Sorry, that was a lot. I know that all is gentle. But um, thank you for bringing up those things.
Yeah, all great comments and I appreciate the feedback. The um. The one thing, this is a different kind of perspective, but these three. Um, maybe I'm, these three here, I'm trying to highlight with my cursor. These are all essentially the same massing structure. They're all in the same seven thousand square foot lot and they're all sixty percent lot coverage. Again, this is a maximum, but what to me this represents is the same structure, whether somebody built this. Same structure as even a single family home. I've kind of used this example before. Somebody could build a twenty-four hundred square foot single family home. And maybe divided up internally into two units or under. Middle housing of the lot, the lots large enough even on um three units. But you could build the same structure as a duplex or triplex or even fourplex. Um, Dylan is a big advocate of what he calls this deeper affordability option. And he's advocating for, you may hear this through the um. Community outreach, feedback, and ultimately through the public hearing process, but that if we, you know, allowing the same structure. What's the difference if it's four units inside versus six units inside? The idea being they're just smaller units and theoretically maybe more affordable. Um, middle, the the, you know, what we're mandated by the state to do. Doesn't require us to look at that, although ultimately through House Bill two thousand and three and looking at ways to incentivize. More affordable housing. Um, that doesn't preclude us from doing that. So anyway, just wanted to mention that he was. Kind enough to provide the images, so he included this as kind of his, I think, small pitch towards his idea, but. Commissioner Bergen.
Commissioner Bergen.
Thank you. I think um I I wanted to just put a little pen in the six plex that you have here. Um, if this was something we were to move forward with, as far as um my background goes. In the real estate world, anything larger than a four unit um. Complex does require, it transitions from the ability to get a residential home loan. It transitions to a commercial loan and that requires a larger down payment and a different credit score. Um, and different tax implications. Um, and so that's something that I would hope that we would keep in mind. Um, because it totally, even though it is still housing, it moves it from residential as far as lenders look at it over to commercial. And um then that would. Uh, I I don't, so I just want to make sure that when, if we do look at six plexes, just understand there's different um correlations as far as when a lender looks at. That unit, it will no longer be looked at as residential.
And I don't want to come across as trying to advocate at all for Dylan or his idea, but just, I think. Part of his ideas, the deeper affordability is that they would be um like capped at a certain rent. At least his existing project is a cooperative and so it's, and then you have to meet income. Um, thresholds in order to qualify to live in a cooperative and it just is. I think it, so in it, I think, I don't want to speak for him, but my understanding is that. This would be a situation where these would be rent controlled units. Um, and might be owned by, you know, for instance, some a nonprofit or somebody providing affordable housing. Anyway, or cooperative type model. And so I understand your perspective about the commercial loan and stuff too. The other thing I'll just say is. Um, I think with the implication of Senate Bill four fifty-eight. Even though you you know, these might be three stacked units on one side and three stacked on another. In theory, somebody could divide this down the middle. And have kind of a triplex on each side again if it meant building code and things. So anyway, it's, it's just an idea and it's. I think with the thought of providing more flexible options to try and create units that are providing affordability.
Yeah, I think that's great and I appreciate it and I'm all for more units. Um, I just want to make sure that we have that in the back of our mind that. Anything higher than four units um does change things. Thank you. I appreciate that.
Thank you for your feedback. And so I can scroll back through again, I'm I'm going through these pretty quickly. If you want me to. Stop on any of them. I'm going to go back to kind of the beginning and then go through them one by one. What they attempted to do is, you know, again, start with the existing, here's a single family home. Then move forward to, okay, we're proposing to reduce the lot size and then increase the height to thirty-five feet. And reduce the setback to five. Now, I don't think this is a realistic scenario based on needing to have parking. And stormwater, but this again, so this would represent the maximum building volume. Um, so this, you know, compared to today, um. And then this is kind of a side by side comparison, I think, of a, again, a three thousand square foot lot, which we don't really allow today necessarily, but. This would be the existing height versus proposed height, existing lot coverage to proposed lot coverage. Um, anyway, trying to do some side by side comparisons. Then again, so the variation is primarily in the lot size, height and lot coverage. This is again, the a single family home, smaller lot, taller. Um, this is just a slightly wider lot instead of, I think the other one was thirty. By a hundred foot lot for a three thousand square foot lot. This one's. A forty foot wide lot by seventy-five foot lot depth, so just representing some different lot dimensional standards. Again, a side by side comparison. Uh, Commissioner Quagio.
Uh, yes, thanks, Mark. Uh, I can't read the side setbacks on uh those. It's the scale is a. A little too small for my eyes. What is that intended to be?
So these show five, all of them are represented by foot side setbacks, which is our current existing side setback.
Thank you.
We are, I'll just mention, we are proposing to reduce the rear setback from um. Ten down to five. That's the only real setback change. The, I'll mention too, for a front setback. It's a minimum ten, that's existing, but for any garage. The existing is an eighteen foot setback to account for a driveway. We're not proposing to change that. And that, so any garage would also continue to have to be an eighteen foot setback. So again, just kind of side by side comparisons for the di- different units. I think again, I've mentioned this, but so this. Is essentially the same structure as a previous one. It's just that it could be two units inside. Versus this one that would be just one unit. So again, the same massing of a structure. Does it really matter how many units it is inside? Again, parking will probably be the biggest variable in determining that because um, I'll say the, the most. Parking that will be able to allow. Or, excuse me, the most parking will be able to require under the state middle housing rules is one space per unit. So for a duplex, the most parking will be able to require is two onsite parking spaces. That's, I think, one of the bigger conversation points um that we'll be looking for feedback on. From the public and we can allow less than that. For instance, we could require no onsite parking. They could rely entirely on uh street parking or just, you know, um. The street parking is not designated for anyone. It's just a first come, first served. But um. And the market can decide, a developer, even though we don't require. More than one space or can't require more than one space, a developer can choose to develop more than that. Um, but we can't require it. So again, these, all these images, you know, obviously. In all the explanation I've been providing tonight on these images, worth trying to figure out a way to share these images in a way that will be helpful. The public and provide the context and explanation for what is being representative. So trying to figure out how to incorporate these into the community outreach. Um, we haven't quite figured that out a hundred percent yet. I will just represent that or 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 mention that. So our existing height limit is thirty feet and we're proposing to raise it to thirty-five. The way we define and calculate height is based on the midpoint of um. You know, the the gable here, that's just how it's defined currently. We're not proposing to change how that's defined. Primarily the reason we're leaving it is actually um, it used to match building code. And then at some point, building code changed and I I they had a much more technical way to define height based on. I think the top plate of a wall or something, but building code has recently changed back. And now matches our planning code definition of how we calculate height. So. We want to be to the extent we can to make it less confusing, consistent with building code. Um, so keeping it as this midpoint. Although I'll mention too that if this were, say, a flat roof or a shed roof or or some other, you know, roof design. Um, I'll just use the flat roof as an example. This could be a a thirty-five foot tall box of a flat roof. And that would meet the height um, is my understanding. So this midpoint. Is only in the case of a gable, really, is kind of a fine point. So anyway, I've been talking a lot. Um, that's pretty much. Everything I was going to be able to share tonight, my formal presentation. I do have kind of some things, some next steps I can um talk about. But I'm happy to open it up for more discussion or questions from the commissioner. Invite at this point.
Thank you, Mark, and great presentation. Um, I'll just remind everyone that we're wearing our CCI hats right now and so. Um, questions would be best directed at, you know, language, how things are presented, how to reach um enough folks. Are, you know, the right folks and and all of that. And we will have plenty of time and spend a lot of time with Mark over the summer. To get into the nitty gritty code components through our planning commission role. With that being said, um, are there any comments, questions? You blew us all away, Mark.
Look, you all speaks less.
Commissioner, go.
Yeah, thanks for that. Um, that's all really good work. I think the graphics are awesome. If there's any way to um. You know, develop more graphics in the, in the um. Online tool, um, that's really helpful. Um, I did want to throw out a couple of other resources, although. Um, I did want to throw out a couple of other resources, although, um. We didn't go through that outreach stuff yet, but one, uh, community organization that. Is reaching a lot of people right now is Ark of Lane County. Um, because they're doing some of the food box distribution. They are, um, coordinating with a lot of. Organizations. So they're a really strong partnering organization. So not that you necessarily would want to offer to present to them, but they might be willing to distribute, um, this information to, to their. Big web of partner organizations. And then the other thing I wanted to mention is if you do any live presentations, um. If it could, or not necessarily in person, but if there are even a Zoom presentation. Um, we're finding a lot of audiences, um. Feel more able to connect to Facebook live than to log into a Zoom situation. So that's just an option if you want to sort of broaden the accessibility of your virtual presentations.
Yeah, great. Thank you for that.
Commissioner Bergen.
Thank you and thanks, Mark, for, um, this great presentation. I feel like with the information that you have, the website. Um, I think that it's going to be. Well received from the community as far as ease of access to get the information. Um, and I think the biggest thing for me, when I am someone looking on someone's website is, it's always frustrating when I can't find immediately. Um, without doing too much work because as Chairman McKinley had mentioned earlier, we're not going to really spend. Uh, our generations aren't going to spend a whole lot of time looking for a way to contact. So if we can just really make sure that that is. Um, I don't want to say screaming in their face, but very prevalent. Um, and in fact, on, I have the Zoom. Um, webpage up, open behind and I see a little chat with us now icon. And I don't know if that's something that can be implemented. Into the website to where even if there's not a live representative, we can still have an easy. Access for, um, a method of communication. That follows them around instead of them having to scroll and lose their, their spot on the webpage. So that we can really make sure if someone has something to say, um. It seems as though it's rare that we're able to get community engagement in the amount that we would love to see. And so if someone's taking the time to go to a website, I would love to just have that, um, for lack of a better phrase, in their face of here's your way to contact us. Um, so that would just be my biggest feedback. And I know we, we sort of talked about that a little bit earlier, but that's just something that's been. Sitting with me as if we can make it almost too easy for them to get in touch with us. And I, again, I want to thank you for all of the work you guys have put into this. This is great.
Yeah, thank you. I think that makes me think of a lot of websites I'll go to and the live chat bubble pops up and they're like, you have a question for us? So yeah, I don't know. The technology part of that, but I can definitely work with our folks working on this stuff and see if that's possible.
Um, I would like to suggest that if it's possible, um, you know, I know that, or I think it's my understanding that Springfield has some. Um, limited counter hours right now, um, for public works. Okay, that's correct. So. Um, if we have a principal version of the story map and a principal version of the survey, you know, Springfield has really excellent, um, customer service and. I remember with the TSP update process, um, with the open house, you know, a lot of folks drove down to city hall and waited in line and knew that their questions would be answered by a human. Um, and so just like promoting your email address or a place to, um, ask questions all over the webpage and open house. Um, I would also like for there to be materials that can be distributed in person, um. And also just major kudos for doing all of this, you know, you already, it was already ambitious for. Um, for you and your team to take on the development code update project and then Hospital two thousand and one happened. And then a pandemic happened and has been happening for fifteen months. And then Senate Bill four fifty-eight got passed. So just, it's amazing that you keep doing what you're doing and. Um, hopefully we can hear from as many people as possible and I'll pass it to Commissioner Quaidla.
Thank you, Chair. Um, yes, uh, I agree with Commissioner Bergen that, um, very good work and, um. Wherever it can be, if we can make stuff upfront and obvious to the people who will casually visit. And then, uh, piggybacking on what, uh, Chair, uh, McGinley said, um. Visits to City Hall, there's that information board, um, uh, screen in, uh. In front of the front counter that oftentimes has been used to show, uh, information, for instance, on roundabouts. And I think if some of the, uh, images and a couple of other things could be put up on there to, to mention the code update in. Real short and pithy, um, sentences and particularly those, uh, excellent graphics. Uh, that you got for the lot changes, that that would be very useful and very likely could provide, uh, additional engagement. Um, and additional interest for folks who were unaware of, um, some of the changes coming up. Thank you.
Yeah, great. Thanks for the feedback. We will definitely be using that TV video display in our lobby. Um, and I like the suggestion for the hard copies. I think we would have eventually thought of that. It hadn't been on the forefront of my mind, but. Definitely having hard copies will be important. And I'll just mention that we currently are open two days a week. Um, we will be moving to open forties a week starting July sixth. So as we're kicking off this community engagement. The opportunities for in-person, um, interactions will be increasing at the same time. So that's all great feedback.
Any other questions from the commissions, commissioners? Okay, any other comments from you, Mark?
Yeah, if I, I could just take a second and talk a little bit about next step. So you mentioned we'll be meeting throughout the summer. So we will be scheduling. Ongoing work sessions with the planning commission, um, to go start diving into the actual code sections and the language itself. So that'll be ongoing now over the summer. Um. Let me just double check. I did mention the AARP grant, but we also are. At the end of this month applying for a DLCD grant to help us also with. Um, some of the legal findings hopefully to, uh, to justify the code changes. So. We'll be hopefully finding about, out about that soon. Um, obviously conducting the community engagement over the summer and we'll be giving you updates as that goes on and we continue to meet with you. And then, um, we'll just, we'll be having our quarterly update. I envision as September comes around, hopefully wrapping up the community engagement and then transitioning into. The public hearings process. That will involve a joint work sessions with the Lane County Planning Commission and ultimately joint. Public hearing because this is bigger than just the housing pieces. Again, it's a broader code update that includes. Uh, zoning regulations that apply outside our city limits, inside our urban growth boundaries. So it'll be a, a. Joint process with the, with the county. So, but that's all I have, just some next steps and I appreciate all your help and input. Uh, very beneficial.
Great. Thank you, Mark. Any questions about timeline over the summer? Okay, so I have it on my clock as, um, six forty-eight. We are scheduled for a public hearing. For a regular meeting at seven. Um, so do I have consensus for taking a twelve minute break? And the link will be the exact same. So don't go away. Turn off your video. You can eat, you can hang out. Uh, you can tune into Lane County Planning Commission if you really miss it. And otherwise, um, see you at seven. I close the, um, the meeting of the CCI.
Thank you.
Thank you.